Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance empowers this board to hear references from the city council, applications for variances and special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, we will either make a final determination or sign a recommendation to the city council. I'm Lori Summers, the current chair. Present here with me tonight are board members Mary Beth Burns, Matthew Rogers, Claire Weinberg, and Andrew Gallimore. We therefore have a quorum. Also present here tonight from city staff is Melissa Klotz. This is a formal hearing, and we have rules that govern our proceedings. Our most important rule is that only one person may speak at a time. It is not just civility, but it is necessary to accurately record our proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is that we hear first from the staff and the documents in the file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or repellent. After the applicant or repellent has completed their initial submission, any person who has a legal interest in real property located within 500 feet of the property that is the subject of the application or appeal may then present evidence to reasonably question witnesses or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been received, the applicant or repellent will be given an opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Board members may ask questions of anyone offering testimony or statements at any time. All testimony and statements will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, we ask that you leave your testimony or statement to your own personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please tell us your name and address, and be sure that your name is printed on the signup sheet at the entrance. Because we do not have a court reporter, it is imperative that you speak at a microphone so your testimony or statement will be recorded. We are audio and video recorded in this space and subject to broadcast. When all the testimony, other evidence, and statements have been received, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. And I will just note, from talking to staff, that because of a conflict in getting counsel for the city in -- who has a conflict meeting, we are going to just swap a couple of the items on the agenda this evening. So we're going to hear 2944 Colfax Street first before 2025 Dempster Street. Is Colfax here? Thank you. Okay, then we will jump into that in a second, then. However, our first item on our agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from our July 2nd meeting. Were there any comments or corrections with respect to those minutes?
I have a clarification. In the 2335 Hartrey Avenue, in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th paragraph, that begins with Chairman Summers, second sentence from the end, the three-quarter bedrooms, my guess is she really meant to say three to four. And then in the next sentence where it says Ms. McLennan, Ms. McLennan wouldn't be caught dead saying that. I would.
Okay, with that, is there a motion?
I would move that we approve the draft of our minutes for July 2nd, 2013, as amended with the corrections this evening.
Second. Ben moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'm going to note that Member Weinberg was not present at that meeting and has therefore abstained from the vote. And otherwise, the minutes are approved and carried forward. And with that, we will switch gears to 2944 Colfax Street. And if you could read that into the record when you're ready, Melissa.
Jason Elzardia and Vicky Levinson, property owners, apply for major zoning relief to construct a two-story addition. The applicants request a rear yard setback of 11.7 feet where 30 feet is required, zoning code section 6828A4, and an impervious surface ratio of 46.8 percent where a maximum 45 percent is allowed, zoning code section 68210A. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application submitted June 14th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, platyp survey dated November 1st, 2005, buildable area staff analysis, site plans, elevations, aerial map, zoning map of property, image of property, spark draft meeting minutes of June 26th, 2013, and an additional handout handed out tonight from the applicant's architect that includes a letter as well as a reduced impervious surface plan, which now complies with the 45 percent so that an impervious surface variance is no longer requested.
Okay, and if we could swear in at this time, anyone who thinks they would wish to speak to us regarding 2944 Colfax Street? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you very much. And if you could come forward and again give us your name and address before you begin.
My name is David Mangerton. I'm the architect principal with KMA and Associates, Inc., Architects, 1161 Lake Cook Road, Deerfield, Illinois. The owners, Vicky Levinson and Jason Elzaria, had asked me to come on their behalf. They are out of town. And we are the architects that prepared the documents that are before you. The rear yard setback request is due to the fact that the property is a existing legal non-conforming lot by your current ordinance. It has a very shallow depth of approximately 69 feet. So if one were to implement the rear yard setback of 30 and the front yard setback of 27, obviously you couldn't build any -- anything on this site of any consequence. The project is to demolish the existing sunroom and add a two-story addition. And as Melissa indicated, we worked with staff to reduce the impervious surfacing to comply with the ordinance. So on the basis of a hardship where the client -- the owners would like to build a master bath and office workout area and a family room, they couldn't if they complied with the zoning.
Sir, what were the changes that -- could you just outline the changes from what might have been in our packet versus what the proposal is now that lead us to dropping the impervious surface?
Sure, I'll do the best I can. We created the drawing, the multicolored drawing that you have before you with AutoCAD program, and we work with staff to determine what their basis was. And we discovered that rectangular area marked garden to the south of the existing garage was indicated or calculated as impervious when in fact it's pervious.
So are you -- because in the platyp survey, it says it's a frame shed. That's why we think it's...
No, no, I agree.
So you guys are planning on removing that frame shed?
Oh, it's gone. I provided photographs to show that there's a garden there.
Oh, it's actually -- okay. It's gone already?
Yeah, it's gone already.
Okay.
And then there was an area to the -- okay. See the notation, remove existing pavers to the south of the new addition. That was also a change. And I think, I think pretty much that was it. I believe our square footages are very close to Melissa, what Melissa had. So we now comply with, I believe, 44 percent, where before her analysis showed 46.8, and our calculation actually showed 47. So we're in agreement within reasonable calculation, reasonable error. Our calculation is based on a computer calculation, so it's pretty accurate.
Can you talk to me about, you know, one of the standards is that the request is the minimum change necessary. And I know we're probably talking about pocket change at this point, but it seems as though the addition could be just as deep as the main house, and so you could gain a couple more feet as opposed to being adjacent to the distance to the neighbor. So can you talk to me about that, the need for that extra three feet and what's going on with all that?
It is subjective.
Of course it is.
There's no question about it. I'd like to point out that the owners did talk to the neighbor to the south. I don't have his name, but he was -- they reached out to him, and he had no objection to this addition. He'd be the one that's most affected by this. The back of the garage is 10 feet, I think, 2 inches. So our request for an 11-foot, 9-inch is less than what exists there today. But, I mean, your question is a good one, but the clients had indicated what they wanted in terms of masturbate, you know, it's a matter of what they -- what their expectations are.
Right.
I'm sure a foot wouldn't hurt them, but as you can see, this property is extremely narrow and...
Right, no, I understand that. I understand there is, I mean, this is one of the few pieces of property that I've seen that actually has a true hardship because you're, you have nothing to build on. There is no buildable land anywhere on the property.
Right.
It's just, one of the things I like to look at is trying not to go further than where the existing house is, right? Because everybody sort of buys into that as being where the extent of the house is and the extent of the building line. And so when you go beyond that, that's where I start to get, have a little trouble because it seems like there's such a clear back of the house and a line of where you can build up to.
Well, in actuality, we respect that. We're back from the front, and we're back from the garage, which would be the deepest part. So we are respecting that.
Melissa, can you explain really quick, just refresh my memory in terms of the, how the front yards work too on, I mean, I get the concept of how the front yards work on a main, on like a main street frontage, but do the, do the rules change at all when you're on, like, when your house doesn't face the main frontage of all the other houses? Like, the at, that at, because would this, wouldn't this house be subject to that kind of averaging rule or, and how does that work when it's, when it doesn't face the main frontage like everybody else?
The actual direction that the house faces has no impact on how zoning looks at it. So from a zoning perspective, we're looking at the front yard with the required typical setback of 27 feet.
So they don't have to take the average of any of the houses next to them in doing that, or they, like, do they have to take the, do they have to follow the average rule of like the houses on either side of them?
If the other houses have front yards in that same area, yes, but if it's a street side yard, then no.
That's what I was trying to understand.
So in this case, it would not be averaging with that next house to the east because that would be the street side yard.
Okay, so they're only comparing themselves to the house on the west there. For the record, was there anyone else in the public who wished to speak to us regarding the matter on Colfax? We'll note that there is no public comment or questions with respect to this project. Are there any further questions or discussion before we close the record and begin our deliberations? Okay, did you have anything further, sir?
No, I don't.
All right. Then with that, we're going to close the record on this case and begin our deliberations. I do feel similar to you in some of these sort of items in terms of like assumed encroachment Any other thoughts from the rest of the board before we run through this, now that I found my list?
I mean, I'll just say, I kind of agree with where you two have gone. Granted, it doesn't go back as far as the garage, but the garage is a one-story flat roof. There doesn't, there's no mass to it whatsoever. And in this type of a situation, you know, does the next person come and say, "Well, I want to make the back of the house even, so I need an additional three feet all the way across," or something like that? So it kind of opens the door to, to a problem. I mean, I'm not going to redesign a project or anything, but it seems to me that even shifting that whole addition forward still keeps you within your front line or your front yard setback, because it appears to be about 30 feet as proposed. Even that additional three foot, three feet puts them right at 27, which is allowed. And so, I mean, that's, that's my issue with it is just that we are encroaching further into that backyard, which is a very small backyard. There doesn't seem to be much there. But just again, that it opens the door for a further encroachment later when I think that it could be lined up across the back, and you still aren't really losing any square footage. You have to reconfigure a bathroom. But that's kind of where, where I'm landing on it.
Yeah. Based on that discussion, shall I run through the standards under the consideration of a condition with respect to alignment, you know, no further encroachment than the existing?
Do you want to talk to the, the applicant?
I don't.
No?
I don't know that it matters in this case.
Okay.
Because otherwise, it's the difference between getting a complete...
Yeah, right.
...denial, which I don't think is what they're looking for, so. So with that in mind and the discussion that has been had, I'm going to run through the standards under the consideration of board members' concerns with respect to further encroachment into the rear property beyond the existing, existing setback of the main house structure, which we can find here in a second. 15-1?
15-foot-1, based on the first floor side plan.
Okay.
Plus or minus?
Survey might...
Not on the survey.
No.
Got to do the math on the survey.
Uh-huh, okay. Well, that being said, then, we'll run through the standards for a major variation. Standard number one being the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. The applicant has indicated that conversation has been had with the adjoining property and that those, those neighbors do not, at this time, believe there will be a substantial adverse impact on their use and enjoyment of their property. And given the scale of the properties and the aspect of the fact that this is their, this would be their rear yard, not necessarily quite as much up next to their house, that should reduce that impact and also considering the current proposal or current condition discussed with respect to not encroaching further than the existing main house, that should as well reduce any substantial, any adverse impact below a substantial adverse impact. Standard number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. And indeed, we are trying to maintain the usable nature of this existing home and property while still keeping in touch with the zoning ordinance. We're very happy to see that there's a reduction in the, or an understanding brought together in terms of the impervious surface so that we're taking that variation off the table and keeping in further accordance with the zoning ordinance. Standard number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. There's been discussion with respect to the nature of this property being kind of one of the rear split-off properties of the main properties that go along the block, and therefore the overall area of the property and with the setbacks apply and creates a sort of virtually unbuildable footprint within which to work. So nearly any work that the property owners wish to do to their property would require a variance, and therefore, this is indeed a peculiar aspect to this property. Standard number four, the property owner would suffer particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Again, as indicated, the allowable building area for this property is very small, and nearly any work desired to be done to the property would require a variance, which would indeed be, be a particular hardship. So that standard has been as well. Standard number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. This is a property that be, is being improved for use by the existing homeowners, and there's no evidence that this improvement is at all based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income. Standard number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property, and this property and its subdivision has been in place for quite some time and is not the result of the current owners of the property. Standard number seven, the requested variation is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty which affects the property. This is the item of standard of most discussion, and given the proposed condition, I believe that this is the minimum change necessary to alleviate the hardship while, while providing for the addition that is desired. Having run through the standards, is there a motion?
I would move in the matter 13ZMJV0058 regarding 2944 Colfax Street that we approve the requested zoning relief condition on the new structure or the new addition, no, approaching no further into the rear yard than the main house, which according to the architectural plans appears to be 15 feet, 1 inch, and that substantial compliance be with the testimony and documents that have been submitted here this evening.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried unanimously, so good luck. With that, we're gonna, dumpster, with that, we're gonna dump back, jump back to 2025 Dempster Street. So when you're ready, Melissa, if you can read that into the record.
Lander Brown Lessie applies for a special use permit for a commercial indoor recreation facility for the Evanston Soccer Association at 2025 Dempster Street. 2025 Dempster Street is located in the I-2 General Industrial District, which requires a special use permit for commercial indoor recreation facilities to operate, zoning code section 61433. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record are special use application submitted June 11th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, platyp survey dated March 9th, 2008, site plan, ingress egress preliminary agreement, aerial view of property, zoning map, image of property, spark and spark draft meeting minutes of July 10th, 2013.
At this time, could we swear in anyone who wishes to... At this time, could we swear in anyone who wishes to speak with us regarding 2025 Dempster Street? The applicant's not here. Okay. It appears that the applicant is not here. Do we expect them? All right, I guess we will...
I would, I would move at this point that we put this to the end of our agenda and hear the case for 1015 Chicago. And if the applicant does arrive, hear the case this evening. And if not, we will, we will continue it to a later date, or to a later day.
Sorry, sir?
Sorry, I have not the applicant. We are the neighbors of the business, so if the applicant is there, I just wanted to make one statement and question on 2025 Dempster.
That would be unorthodox, but I suppose, um, do you want, do you want to, are you going to wait around anyways to see if they show up?
Well, I wasn't going to.
Well, we don't know if they're going to show up. If they show up before we end, they, I'm just saying, if you're going to wait anyways, then we'll see if they show up and then we'll deal with that at that moment. I don't mean to make you stay, but if you're going to stay anyways. All right, then, since we don't have the applicant for that case apparently, we are going to follow along with Matt's suggestion and continue on our agenda, which brings us to 1015 Chicago Avenue. Is the applicant here for Chicago Avenue? Just to be clear? Okay, good.
Dwayne Soul, architect, applies for major zoning relief to construct two one-story additions at the Autobahn. The applicant requests a floor area ratio of 1.03, where a maximum 1.0 is required, zoning code section 61046. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application submitted June 19th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey, site plans, elevations, concerned citizens' letters and images, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, image of property, and spark meeting minutes of June 26, 2013. Additionally included are some additional letters from concerned citizens that were passed out at the beginning of the meeting, as well as one audio recording and two video recordings that are available for viewing.
At this point, if we could swear in anyone who thinks, even if you maybe might at all speak to us, if I could swear you in at this time and will, if you don't end up speaking to us, that's okay. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. And now, if we could have the applicant?
My name's Dwayne Soul, Soul Architect. My office is in Chicago. I am the architect for Autobahn on this property addition. We are planning, in addition to both the service and the showroom area of the existing building, it's an extension of what's already there. The portion that's extended for the service bays is an extension of the massing that currently exists. And the, um, the extension to the showroom is an extension beneath an existing roof, which right now has some orange trees holding it up. And, um, the, um, the reason for the request for additional area is primarily due to the structure of the, of the building and the addition, what's existing there and how it's modularly expanded. It also works out well for the use, or the, uh, facility of the, of the repair base. It is feasible to do it without a .03 increase in area, and we could do that, but it would be a little of an inconvenience and, and, um, it wouldn't, wouldn't follow the natural structure of the building, so it might look a little odd.
Sorry, sir, could you explain that a little bit more in detail? Because I'd like to, as I'm sure, I don't know if you were here before, but, right, so my, my concern is always that things are the minimum change necessary. So I'd like to understand more clearly what it is you mean specifically. You could meet the 1.0 FAR, but because of what specific reasons?
Well, the, um, the, the service bay portion of the building on the back, which is most of the extension that we're doing, is kind of a modular, pre-engineered frame type of a building and comes in certain modular sections, if you will, standard widths. You can vary those, but it's not standard. And the layout of the service bays, as we, they're, these are prefabricated, pre-made lifts, if you, well, you've seen them, the cars lifted on. We have a 10-foot lift, a three-foot section in between...
Sure, walkway.
For circulation.
Yeah.
Right. And the way it works out to expand the number of lifts that we need works out well with the modularity of the building system.
Okay.
So ideally, that's the width. If we were to reduce to meet the .03...
Right.
I think we'd probably do it on the showroom side...
Right.
Which is right now under roof, um, but open to the outside.
So let me just be clear then, too, then, about the new, you're talking about the new service reception area, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the entire footprint of that is already under roof?
Yes.
And so it's just like a portcocher right now, where you just drive under it and...
Yeah.
Hang out and whatever, people...
They park cars under them.
Okay. But that, in its entirety, is under roof?
I can't say entirety. It's, it's approximately that footprint. I mean, could be a couple of inches there.
So if we asked you to, so if we asked you to limit it to the area that's already under roof, that would not be a problem for you?
No, I think we could do that.
Okay. So those are the two areas of addition, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a, there is a, no, there's also a small bump out on the front of the showroom because it's crowded right now where you come in. There's, if, if, um, I'm sorry, I don't have plants with me, but if you, if you look on the showroom, it's, it's kind of zigzags.
Right, so what's driving, so what's driving that dimension on, for that little bit of addition?
On the front?
Yes.
Simply, simply that it's squeezed there.
So is that, again, based on the modularity of the plan?
No, that, that, that little piece there is based more on, well, it is in the sense that we needed a little more room there so that you didn't just kind of, so you had a little more room when you walk in the door.
Right.
But we went out to the next module, which is a half a bay, which is a column line.
So, right, so if I look at, the strong's not labeled, so it's the Mazda Building Service Bay Expansion.
Mm-hmm.
There's a new sales expanded center. And so the area we're talking about is this area with the two cars in it, right?
Correct, correct.
So I see a column down here in the lower right corner.
Right, right.
So that's an existing column. So you just, you went to a point of existing column...
Correct.
And that's where the addition goes to.
Because we have to frame a beam into something, yeah.
I understand. I get structure. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, so I'm understanding it. This is the minimum structure that's necessary to make it structurally make sense. The new service reception is the minimum area that's already under roof. And the new service bay extensions are based on a module of service bays and the modular construction of whatever you've got going on back there.
Correct.
What's going on up on the second floor? Is any of that new?
Only to the, only to the extent that in order to get the new service entry in, we had to move the stair over. So we had to extend the corridor and the stair over to get the exit to the exterior so that people could exit directly out to the outside.
This stair?
Correct. That, that stair currently is a little bit to your right. Well, it's, it's to the right in that...
It goes down through the new service reception right now?
Correct, correct.
So you have to move it over so that you can exit directly outside?
Correct.
And I'm assuming you've got no fluff in that stair, right? That's the minimum stair necessary by code?
Um, yes.
Okay, I'm getting it. It's a complicated project. Can you talk to us about where this new car wash is relative to where the old car wash is? Can you talk to us about that?
There's a car wash on the backside of the, um, service bay, if you will, adjacent to the alley. There is a...
So on the plan labeled, oh, it's all the same. No, nothing's ever labeled differently. But anyway, so it's, it's this long linear...
It's, it's the dark, it's in the dark portion.
It's just this?
Yes, correct. There's, there's an existing car wash in the, in the Volkswagen building to the north. That's what every, all of the portions of the dealership are using.
Okay.
And they're trying to cut down the use of, of all of the traffic going to that one and put part of it to this one. The...
How many, do you know how many car washes are done a day?
No, I don't, but the, um, the client representative is here. He may be able to speak to that.
Want to bring him up?
Yeah, because I was going to say, my next question was going to be to understand the, it's kind of a little bit wonky aspect of this, but since I know we're going to get questions, I'd rather just cover it now. So the, I wanted to understand the direction of traffic flow and that sort of thing into that, into that car wash.
Meaning how the, how the user uses the property?
Yeah.
How do, how do the guys use the property?
The access is off the alley.
But do I drive out around the block and then I turn in? Or do I go out through the back and then exit onto the alley? Which way do I go?
Do you enter from the alley or do you exit onto the alley?
Well, you pretty much have to enter, you pretty much have to go around and come north on the alley in order to enter that way.
So the direction of the car, I mean, car washes are one way, so...
So on this plan, you enter here?
Right.
Drive down here?
Right.
And then you exit through the Autobahn's property?
Right.
What keeps people from going back out into the alley?
Nothing that I know of. There's a fence there, but I don't know what the, I'm not sure if there's a gate down there or anything they can go out of.
Okay.
I'm not saying it's not possible to go out there.
No, I understand.
But it's so jam-packed cars for, for practical purposes.
That, that back alley line? But is, but is it that way, is it the intent, their intention to use it that way in the future? Which would be the question for the owner's representative. Because I know one of the concerns, right, with the, with the homeowners is the cars, as they go through the car wash and then they go into the alley wet and drip. So if we can stop that and have them always exit through the owner's lot, that alleviates that issue. One of the issues.
I don't think the issue is cars dropping or dripping, dropping.
Or it's drainage. I mean, it's a combination of things.
I think it was the drainage was the issue that I saw.
And to, I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to preface this before we get any further also and say that we're, we're teetering on the scope of what applies with respect to the variation that's asked for here. But I also think we have a little bit of leeway. So that's why I'm going to let this go a little bit. Because this is not a special use request, which gives us a lot more latitude. But I do think that there's maybe an opportunity for us to come to an understanding where, where kind of everybody can be a little bit happier. So that's why I'm going to give this a little bit of leeway. With that being said, I think you had a question that didn't get answered.
Yeah.
That we were looking for owner's representative to answer, so maybe we could get that first. What was it? It was about the...
Uh, it ended up...
Or did we end up answering that?
We ended up solving it, but one of the concerns, right, is noise of the unit.
Yeah.
And you guys have...
We, we, we are not putting in a dryer.
Okay, so you guys are planning on doing hand dries?
Correct.
Okay.
Because of the noise issue.
Okay. So do you know the decibels of that unit? How many decibels the, the car wash unit is?
The car wash itself?
Yeah.
No, I don't. The only question that was posed to us was with regard to drying a dryer.
Okay.
And so we decided because of the noise that we would eliminate using a dryer.
Okay. I'd be happier knowing how many decibels it is, right? We, we regulate how many, how loud your air conditioner is at the lot line. How do we not?
We don't.
I mean, we don't. City code regulates that. Sorry, as a clarification. So it seems to me that it should not be more than that.
Although, does it, just the car wash part of something make a lot of...
Yeah, I think it's just the car wash. I mean, because I think the car wash is causing grief for the neighbors, the sound of the car wash.
I thought it was the dryer. I don't know. We're going to get to the video in a second.
Yep.
So let's, any other questions for the owner for right now? And for the applicant?
Yeah, I guess, because we can talk about how they intend on using that car wash base, right? If they, if it's the intention to pull out through the, through the Autobahn space or go back out into the alley.
Okay. Can we clarify that then?
Can we clarify that with the owner? It's rep, sorry, owner's rep.
My name is Peter Hett. And as it relates to, I guess, traffic flow is the question, I think the intent right now is to funnel the cars after the car wash into the parking lot.
Okay, to keep them on Autobahn property rather than taking them out into the alley?
Correct, because we're at, we're talking about the Mazda facility. And I think the bulk of the cars being, are going to stay, are going to be Mazda and perhaps some Nissan, which is across the street, across Chicago Avenue, that is, the west. So it makes sense to me that the cars, you know, that are being washed from Mazda stay in our lot...
Right.
And/or return to the service area. And Nissan would be able to exit through, onto Chicago Avenue and go across to the Nissan facility.
And you guys are providing the car wash as just a wash after service? Or is this any, any, any owner of a car who bought the car there can come get the car washed any time they want? You know, different dealerships do different things, so I'm just trying to understand what you guys, what your intention is for the use of it.
There are some packages, I, I believe, where, you know, the, a owner of a, a new car can come and get a car wash. But I don't know exactly how to respond to that. I think the, the bulk of it is from service, cars that are being serviced and new cars that are being readied.
And do you know how...
But I can't say that a purchaser of an existing car could come. I can't say that that won't happen.
Okay. Do you know how many times a car wash gets run a day?
I don't. I could only make a guess that we're talking, you know, 100 car washes, something around that at the VW facility currently. And that's a guess.
And I, I've seen in the paperwork somewhere, but I'm not sure it's accurate. Is it accurate that, is it accurate that the other car wash is being eliminated and this would be the only car wash for those facilities? car wash for those facilities?
That is not accurate.
That is not accurate, okay.
Yeah. The existing car wash at VW would stay.
Would stay for VW?
Correct.
Okay.
In the plan... Sorry, in the plan here, in the access to the car wash, it appears as though there's a heavy line here. Does that heavy line represent fencing?
There's a fence there and there's an existing gate at the south end of it.
Okay. Okay. So, that existing fence is remaining?
Yes.
Okay. And then, we talked about that. So, at this point here, there's no fence right here after the car wash right now?
No, there is.
Oh, there is a fence there?
There is.
Okay.
Maybe, Melissa, if we could go to the... There's a new clip or new audio. Is the person who took that video or one of the videos here?
My name is Joshua Bingham. I live at 1024 Hinman.
And are we correct in presuming that you're carrying a decibel meter as part of that video?
Exactly what that is. DVSPL meter, yeah. Measures sound pressure level.
Are there any other questions for him regarding the video itself?
When was the video made?
About 9:45 this morning.
And I have a question for owner's representative. So, when you look at that video, the sound that's coming from there, is that from the dryer or is that the actual car wash sound that we're hearing?
There is no dryer at the VW.
At the existing car wash. So, the 75 decibels is from the car wash?
Apparently.
Apparently, okay.
Do we have any general noise requirements that would cause them to use the garage door or something like that to alleviate that issue at all? Or only... Or do we only have noise requirements that are super specific, like for the air conditioners and stuff like that? Like, is there just a general noise?
General noise requirements for the city are part of the nuisance ordinance and there is no exact specific cutoff. It is up to the interpretation of city staff or the police.
Sorry, for the owner's representative or the architect, have you guys investigated if there is a car wash that can be at a lower decibel? There's got to be...
No, we have not.
Okay.
We can't do that.
I mean, do you sort of get where we're going with the whole...
Can we get guidance as to the requirement that's at the property level?
It sounds like, based on what staff was just saying, that there's not a...
Specific?
There's not a specific requirement per se. It sounds like the city requirement is somewhat subjective, but we are starting to get up there in decibels.
Right. It's just from our perspective, to be a good neighbor, which I'm sure the Autobarn wants to be a good neighbor.
Sure.
Right? Is to limit it to what is generally acceptable elsewhere in the community, which is sort of the sound of an air conditioner at 10 feet off the property line.
I would agree. And, well, two things. Number one, we certainly can do that legwork and find out. And maybe somebody makes quiet ones. I don't know. And maybe the new ones are quieter than the old ones and the old ones... The second thing is, we do intend to keep the fence, which will be flanking the opening. You saw that when they took these readings, you were looking right at the car wash. The door was open. You were standing right there. That will tend to flank the sound as we'll see when you put barriers up along the highway.
What type of fence will that be? That extends out along the alley?
Right now, it's a wooden board fence.
Okay. So, that would be...
It's basically a solid fence.
And how tall...
So, that would be staying?
Is that a standard six-foot fence?
I believe it's about six feet, but we could look at the height of it, too.
Right. Because those door... I mean, obviously, those doors are much taller.
Sure, sure.
Your proposal, though, is to keep a wood fence along there back there. Is that what I'm understanding?
Fence of some sort, yeah. And obviously, solid would suit the purpose a lot better.
Right.
Staff recommendation includes a condition regarding keeping a garage door closed over the space during operation. Is that something that is feasible?
That was our suggestion if an air dryer was to be used, which is quite a lot louder. I would say it'd be quite a hardship to close the door every time you wash the car.
Right, I would think that's not really practical.
No.
So, a more practical solution is to find a quieter car wash.
Find a quieter car wash and use some flanking.
Right.
Methods such as fence to...
Right, to ameliorate the sound, right.
Right.
With that, I think we're going to go to public comment. As I noted before, we are sort of on a borderline here, but we are trying to work with this. And I would also note that please feel free to jump up and adopt, you know, your neighbors' concerns if they match. That way, we can kind of get through everybody. But is there anyone who would like to speak with us regarding this?
My name is Jeff Wooton. My wife and I own the property at 1028 Hinman, immediately abutting the property. And our major concern is the noise of the car wash. I understand this isn't a special use, but the requested floor area ratio is in part to accommodate a car wash, which is planned to be immediately adjacent to the alley. And it is the noise that concerns us. And I would ask that if the concession on the floor area ratio is granted, that the building be asked or the property owner be asked to contain the noise, put noise abatement in place, consider whether the car wash could be in the interior of the building rather than exposed to the alley, those sorts of things. So, it is the noise that concerns us.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak with us?
Josh Bingham again.
What was your address again, sir? Sorry.
Sure. 1024 Hinman.
Okay.
Again, this is directly behind the location that they're thinking about putting the car wash. And so, just for the record, the fence that's there existing is not solid wood. It's like wood, wood, like on either side of a beam, so...
So, it's board-on-board?
Yeah. Well, no, no. It's like offset by, you know, maybe two, three inches. So, as you're walking, you can look diagonal and see straight through it as sound would travel.
Board-on-board.
Oh, is that board-on-board?
Yeah, sorry. That's the technical term for that. It's board-on-board.
It's board-on-board.
Okay. So, you know, I just wanted to put that down.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other concern that I have is that, you know, there's an existing car wash there already. They're going to double the capacity, so I don't anticipate any less traffic. I only anticipate more traffic through our alley. Three small children. I'd like to let them, like, you know, play basketball or whatever. I mean, and these are concerns that I know that I have. So, I just wanted to voice those here and now that the traffic is already an issue. And I've heard, yeah, so, I wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lise El Durham and my husband and my two daughters and I live at 936 Hinman.
Okay.
And my biggest concern is traffic flow. And I don't have an axe to grind against the owner of the Autobarn, but I frequently see that the current traffic flow is already not working. And I question the zoning as it is because the staff treat Lee Street, Chicago Avenue, and the alley as their parking lot frequently. Repeatedly, I have called the owner, talked to the owner, the manager, very nice on the phone, and then it's back the same way within a week. Even on Greenleaf, the Autobarn van barrels down Greenleaf when Nichols students are still coming to school almost every morning. It's a big problem. And so, this really, you know, I don't know if this is the proper venue, but it has to be said at some point because there's a lot of kids, you know, in our neighborhood and an accident's going to happen sooner or later. They do very fast three-point turns on Lee Street and even on Chicago Avenue during business hours. And that's without even mentioning how they use Lee Street as their parking lot. And so, when people come home, there's no place to park. So, there's, you know, to me, that's not being a good neighbor and it's not respecting zoning, you know, when you're right against a residential area. Thank you.
My name is Joe Johnson. I live at 1032 Hinman. And I live right behind the lot that's between Volkswagen and Mazda. So, the house, my neighbor just to the north, has the one car wash behind her house. And our neighbor to the south would have the other car wash. So, I could potentially have, like, stereo car wash sounds right in my backyard. We did some spot tallies three days this last week just to see how many car washes they did. And it seems to take about a minute. And Friday from 3:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon, there were 11 car washes. Saturday from 9:00 to 10:00, there were 16 during an hour. And yesterday from 12:15 to 1:15, there were 14 in an hour. And this goes pretty much from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. that we hear this sound that you heard. The other thing I wanted to say was, the speaker just before me talked about the traffic. When I first heard about this addition, potential addition, right now, as neighbors, I think we patiently accommodate each other. But there's a point at which it might be an overload. And that was my first reaction when I heard that.
My name is Matthias Stöpke. We live at 1042 Hinman Avenue. And we bought a Mazda from the Autobarn, so we are in favor of them in general. You do get free car washes for life, so that's certainly a part of it. That is also owners bringing their car wash. As the other neighbors have mentioned, certainly the noise is the primary concern. So, it's 12 hours a day. It's... You can hear it from every room of our house, and that's, I think, true for most of our neighbors. So, I think our main concern would be noise abatement. But I want to add the second aspect, which is the drainage and runoff. So, there's no dryer, as was mentioned, in the current car wash. The new one's not supposed to have one, too, which means that the cars are driven wet out of the car wash onto the street. So, even when the drain is working in principle, which it isn't always, you always have water on the street. So, this essentially puddles in our alley the entire year, which is essentially an icy surface in the winter. And it's, you know, mosquito breeding ground in the summer, which of course, in West Nile times, is also a major concern. Now, with the new car wash, they're proposing to drive the cars onto the lot, but in principle, nothing at this point would stop them to also drive them to the alley. And given the large amount of parking they have there, my expectation would be that this will also happen. So, I don't know exactly what can be done legally, but I think would also be important to get some kind of commitment that the traffic would be kept out of the alley after the car wash so that this drainage problem is also addressed in addition to the importance of dealing with the noise. In terms of the existing car wash, the most obvious solution would be to keep the doors closed, which would actually be possible there because the car wash is internal to the building. And so, it would be possible to turn left and just keep the cars inside the building. And I don't know, again, if that's a legal possibility, but it would certainly make that problem a lot better to have some commitment to keep those doors closed, to deal with the noise and also the runoff from the existing car wash. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Shirley Dougdale at 1040 Hinman. So, I am just to the north of Joe who spoke previously. Our problem is that we have lived with this sound, and it's really quite unacceptable when you're outside. But the thing about it is that it's also very invasive on the interior of the house. Even with all the windows closed, you can still hear the noise all the way through the house. I have some questions as to whether keeping the doors closed will even ameliorate it that much. I think it's essential to get equipment that has some kind of noise abatement program for the existing facility as well as equipment that is less noisy for the new. The other aspect is that having lived with that installation when it happened, because it's up... The existing garage south door is right across from us, is that the drainage was never designed properly. I believe it was later that they went in and put in a trench drain, and it has never really been solved. So, I think part of this is having the design of the drainage properly approved by the city. Another aspect to this is that these car washes use a fair amount of chemicals. They have pre-washes, they have waxing solutions and other kinds of chemicals that are handled. Some of them are using recycled water. But as the city is becoming increasingly concerned about sustainability issues, I think an understanding of how the disposal of these chemicals will happen, what their volume is, how many washes per hour are going to be planned. And so, I think this is all a consideration that has to be looked at. But the primary thing is the noise pollution and the fact that it's really quite unacceptable. It's up to sort of construction standards, but constantly all day, six days a week. So, thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Wyland, 1012 Hinman. Let me observe, by the way, that I think you have represented here this evening the owners of every single family house on that alley with the exception of one very elderly couple, which I hope you will take as being an expression of the breadth of the concern that's here. With respect to the noise issue, as you saw from Mr. Bingham's video, the sound in the alley by the car wash was in the middle 70s. The American Academy of Audiology says that decibel levels in the 70s and 80s are considered loud. 70 decibels would be considered equivalent to traffic in vacuum cleaners, 80 decibels to alarm clocks. The Center for Hearing and Communication characterizes 40 decibels as quiet residential noise, the kind of level that we would like to see, although we obviously have to make some compromises. Characterizes 70 decibels as freeway traffic and 70 to 80 decibels as the sound level of a coffee grinder sitting next to you in your kitchen. There is a lot of room for improvement. We are also concerned that... About the potential height of the addition. It's characterized as one-story, but among the things that were not provided was an eastern elevation for the property. And we would like to know a little more specifically what one-story means so that we don't end up with the whole side of the alley being shadowed from the afternoon sun. And finally, the Autobarn has done a number of things to clean up its act in the last few months, I hope in recognition of the fact that being a good neighbor is good business. There's been a fairly drastic reduction in the number of vehicles that they have parked in the alley. The ugly old fence has been replaced. The detailing building at the south end of the alley has been painted rather nicely and the lighting has been improved. We appreciate that and hope that that will continue to be the way the Autobarn operates. that and hope that that will continue to be the way the Autobarn operates. I do express the concern that a number of things are stated as intense. And as Matthias said, the intention is to route traffic not back into the alley. The intention is not to have a dryer. But if a variance is granted, we would hope that there would be some way to memorialize that intention, so that a year from now or two years from now, the traffic would not be able simply, on the Autobarn's whim, be able to be rerouted into the alley, or for them to decide that an air blower would in fact make their life easier, and therefore it would be added as an afterthought to the collection. Thank you very much.
Since we're on this really quick, could we just get a clarification from ownership? That it seems to me that if I'm reading the elevations correctly, that the proposed addition, well, certainly taller than a typical residential one-story, is consistent with the existing service bay height? Is that, that's correct? So, yeah, if we could, yeah, if we could just have you come up really quick and jump on that. So the, there is exposure in the rear of the property, because it, the, most of the two-story aspect is towards the front of the property, correct?
Actually, the, the addition that was done in 2006, I believe it was, is a three-story addition.
Mm-hmm. But all of that, all of that is towards the front of the property? It doesn't, it doesn't abut?
Correct.
The rear portion of the building?
The rear portion of the building is the, is the repair or...
Service?
...base, if you will. And the ridgeline to that, which slopes back towards the alley, is maintained the same height. So the, the massing does not increase from existing in height, only in length.
And do you have to alter your detention as a result of this addition?
I have not. I've just brought a civil engineer on board.
Okay.
And we'll be looking into that. We have discussed the drainage of the, of the car wash and intend to deal with that such that it isn't an issue. I think it's a much bigger issue on the existing. Then we'll obviously have more of an opportunity to deal with it in a new condition.
It would be fair to say, though, that as part of that work and any potential detention, that any runoff from the new roof would be, would be collected on, would be collected on-site and/or otherwise brought into the storm system and not dumped into the alley, correct?
Correct. We're replacing impervious with impervious. So, but it'll have to be taken into the, part of what we're looking at with the civil engineer is there is some existing on-site retainerage, we believe, beneath the parking lot. And we'll be able to utilize the capacity of that.
Okay. Thanks. Sir?
My name is Andrew Malka. My partner and I, my daughter, live at 1014 Hinman. And we're new Evanston residents, so this is really cool to see you guys putting this out there and letting us have our opportunity to discuss the matter with you. So thank you. My neighbors pretty much covered the audio concern, which is a big part of my disbelief. But primarily, I'm worried about increased mobile traffic. I appreciate Josh's wish to use the alley for the kids, but that's just not happening right now. And I think any additional mobile traffic is going to create an unsustainable position. Greenleaf and Lee are huge thoroughfares to the lake. You get walkers, joggers, dog walkers. And if you sit out there for any couple hours at a time, you'll see some close calls. And that alley is really more of a street for Autobarn. And I think, I'm not sure of the legality of that, but it's not a common area. For most practical purposes, that's for the cars to drive down and do their thing. So we bought knowing full well that that was the situation, and so be it. But the idea of there being additional car traffic, car wash, toxins put into the ground and into the air is, is tough to reconcile with. So thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you.
I just want to say one other thing. I really wish I would have heard from Autobarn first instead of having the neighbors tell me, because all the stuff that we do together, we talk to each other, and I consider Autobarn our neighbor, but I haven't heard from them. We just came here and learned most of the plans tonight.
Thank you.
Evening. Yulius Lukachi, 510 Greenleaf. So we're at the north side of the alley, where the current car wash is. A lot of the same concerns about noise and noise pollution. And in addition to that, I would like to add that there's a lot of horn beeping when they exit. So whenever the car wash is completed, instead of stopping and slowly looking, there's a lot of sort of high-speed traffic through that area, not just sort of rolling traffic. Yeah, and there's been some close calls on my end. Now, the other issue is also when there's an additional car or truck through the alley. So now there's two of them. It's not a two-lane type of a street, it's an alley. And some of the properties, at least our property, has been damaged in the past. So again, what happens when you have a large truck, delivery truck, going through the alley, and you have additional cars going through the alley, they ended up squeezing through the alley, and some of the property gets damaged. So please take in consideration what's happening today with the car wash, and some of the improvements perhaps that could be put in place in the next car wash to be retrofitted to the, the current location. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who didn't get to speak yet?
My name is Justine Bianco, and I'm also at 1024 Hinman. And I share all of my neighbors' concerns. Just yesterday, I was trying to pull into my garage with my three young children, and my daughter was almost clipped by a car from the Autobarn. I feel like we, as neighbors, are very accommodating, and maybe we have a golden opportunity here for the Autobarn to reconfigure their plans with the neighborhood and the neighbors who share the alley as more of a consideration. There are a lot of ways that they could do this. And I see that Chicago is a commercial strip. I see no reason for our alley to become a commercial street. So I would like them to consider moving any commercial activities, car wash, and anything of that nature to the front, to Chicago Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Regina Wooton. I live at 1028 Hinman Avenue. And I would just like to say that I share all of my neighbors' concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa, do I gather correctly that this, is this, with the areas that are being illustrated here, is this all one, is this considered all one lot in terms of zoning and in terms of our gross area calculations? Am I... Or is that just, or is that just extraneous information?
It is all considered one. If you look at the plative survey, it clarifies it a little bit more.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, because it was like parcel, parcel, parcel. So I wasn't sure if it was different owners, but, or different entities, sort of.
It's all one zoning lot?
It's all one zoning lot. Okay. So essentially, for that whole block, then, like, this is, this is it without any sort of major, major zoning?
All of the buildings together comprise the 1.03 requested FAR.
And also, one other clarification. In terms of, since a lot of the testimony has sort of resembled a special use discussion, car washes are not special uses? Or because of the nature of its extension as part of the, as part of the auto place, it's not a special use?
The car wash is considered an accessory use to the automobile dealership, similarly to a car wash being a part of a gasoline service station.
And the, and the dealership is not a special use in this district?
The automobile sales is a permitted use. And in the case that a car wash was a primary use, that would be a special use. But in this specific case, since it's accessory, it is permitted as a right.
And service is a, is accessory to sales, or service is a separate issue?
The service is accessory to sales as well, but is also a permitted use.
It's also permitted. Okay. Did any of you guys need to see the other, or want to see or hear any of the other video or audio that was on the file?
I looked at it. I looked at the one Melissa said, so I'm good.
I listened and watched.
Okay. I just wanted to offer it up in case you wanted to at this point. Okay. Are there any other questions for the owners or the neighbors at this point?
I have a quick question for, I think it was Mr. Bingham. You submitted the decibel on the property. Did you do, did you happen to do any decibel studies on your property or anywhere else in the neighborhood?
I did. There was a second video that I did, and I believe that was something... Oh, okay. Well, the other one was directly behind my property, which is more or less where I believe the new car wash is proposed. And that, kind of the rough average that I found there was 50 dB as opposed to...
So you were, you were standing at your back lot line, or where, or behind your house, or where were you?
I was standing kind of mid-alley.
Okay.
You know, and I'm not exactly sure where the property line...
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out if you were at, up at your house, or where you were relative to...
Right, right.
Okay, so about mid-alley, right by, right behind your house.
Exactly.
And you were at 50.
Yeah, and that was 1024 Hinman, so.
And you were measuring, obviously, the sound of the car wash that's there, which is, seems to be like a good 100 feet at that point?
From there?
Yeah. Fifty, 50, I mean, I'm guessing from a plative survey.
Yeah, it's like, yeah.
It's like 100 feet from where you are.
It's like four lots away or so.
Okay.
Are a lot of the, I'm trying to remember...
Probably be about 150 feet.
Are the condenser units that we see, are those, why do I, am I wrong that I have 65 in my head?
55?
55.
55 at the lot line, so they can be louder? Because they're 10 feet off the lot, so they can be louder. But by the time you get to the lot line, they can be no more than 55?
Yeah, sound pressure, I mean, it varies tremendously with distance. So I mean, something that's extremely loud, like on the receiver of your phone even, right there, as you know, you can have it to where it's piercing in your ear. But just right there, now all of a sudden, it's almost inaudible. So the same is true of large sounds as well.
Right.
Before I close the record, I just want to really quickly get an understanding from you guys in terms of your thoughts as far as conditions with respect to, I mean, I think I've, I've got like a list here with respect to drainage, blah, blah, blah. But in terms of this...
We're going beyond the scope of what we're supposed to decide.
So that's why I'm trying to figure out where we're, I'm trying to figure out where our...
We can make recommendations.
I'm trying to figure out where our middle ground is in terms of discussing with the owners before I close the records, that hopefully we can come to some sort of understanding that...
I mean, I think really, what I'd like to hear is from Autobarn making some good-faith gestures towards the community. I mean, they're asking for .03 on their lot coverage. Yes, they're a strong business in Evanston. We certainly want to support them. On the other hand, you know, there's a large community group representation that needs to be addressed. And I don't hear any real commitment from Autobarn. I think the minimum they could do is hire an acoustical engineer to come out and do some site reports. There's acoustical materials that can be added to fencing that helps mitigate, it's like a stucco material that can help mitigate some of the reverberation. Because if you put another loud, another wood fence there, it's just going to reverberate even more and echo beyond into the adjacent property. So there could be some goodwill gestures that Autobarn could do to help the community.
I think that's why I wasn't, didn't want to close the record, because I want, I wanted to, I wanted to hopefully come to an understanding that we could, that we could all be okay with. I mean, they have talked, they have stated that they won't be using an, you know, a mechanical drying system. They have stated that they will address the drainage. They have stated traffic entering the car wash from the alley direction instead of entering, instead of exiting on the alley, which should also take care of the honking issues. So I see a lot of, I see a lot of issues being addressed. But I would feel a lot more comfortable about that extra area if we could come to a little bit of an understanding about that. Ma'am?
Do you want me to say my name again?
Yeah, if you could. Sorry, just for the record.
It's Regina Wooton, and I'm at 1028 Hinman Avenue. My understanding is that we have the right to ask for a continuance for one, one time, which we haven't yet decided that we would like to do. But perhaps it might be possible for us to ask for the continuance and then maybe have Autobarn agree to meet with us to perhaps discuss, so that we don't have to have it play out in this room and, and give them the opportunity to work with us. Because we, as neighbors, would support you in your decision to give them the zoning variance if we had some assurances from them that they would be willing to work with us on the sound issues. Does that sound right to my neighbors? Yeah. So would that be a suggestion, or is that something that's within your purview or our purview, or?
Certainly within our purview. It would give opportunity for research in terms of equipment options and those sorts of things, so...
Because I'm not sure, it may have come as a surprise to Autobarn that we were so frustrated by the noise. And perhaps that's why they don't have other, you know, options available. I don't know. But we would be willing to meet with them to discuss noise issues if they would, you know, be willing to do so.
I think it's a good opportunity to let the neighbors try and work stuff out before we... we.
Do we have a problem with the continuance?
Yeah, so I'm all for a continuance.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, when the, the continuance would occur?
That's actually what's going to be my next.
Yeah, and I apologize, because I think that.
The next zoning board hearing is August 6th.
Hold on. Yeah.
Might be too quick.
And then the next meeting after that, I believe, is August 20th.
So August 6th would give three, three weeks for the applicant to, to do a little bit of research and for, for maybe some consensus and discussion. It sounds like you have somebody that really knows sound out there, so that's certainly a rarity, and maybe that, that sort of educated discussion will, will help, will help alleviate some of the concerns as well. So is there?
Is there any chance we could push it to the 20th, or is that not possible?
I'm not sure what the scheduling is, maybe the applicant could, do you know, what other expectations on scheduling?
Well, again, I mean, if we could use up our continuance, or ask for a continuance, or I could ask for a continuance, and then we could arrange to meet with the Autobarn.
Are you guys good with 20th, or are we running, I don't know what, sometimes we're running against different deadlines, and I never know what we're running against, so.
The true deadlines are, you know, if we were to go into construction. Can we get you to a microphone, please, just so it's all recorded? Thank you.
No problem with the continuance. Our, the 6th, the 20th, I think, the only delay it comes to us is, if it's the 20th, is it puts us, construction into the winter time. That said, I am here to state that the Autobarn would, more than anything, love to meet with all the neighbors, and we could set up a time, and these concerns are all airs. I'm new to the Autobarn as of the beginning of the year, and I think my outlook regarding who the Autobarn is and, and to meet with our neighbors is a great idea.
Thank you. Do you see any, anything from your side, Melissa, that would indicate to us?
There, currently, there are no cases scheduled for August 20th.
Is there discussion or a motion?
No, I just ask if we were, do we predict any other cases to come up before the 20th, or have we passed the deadline on that?
We just passed the deadline for the August 6th meeting, so it's, it's still fairly early. I would anticipate we'd probably get about two cases, but you never know.
Continuation of one. Very selfish. That being the case, and nothing else to be said, what's my case number here? In the matter 13ZMJV0062 regarding 1015 Chicago Avenue, I would move that we continue the ca, or continue this case until our meeting on August 20th, which will be here, are we in council chambers then? Here in council chambers at 7:30, per the request of the neighbors.
That will be first on the agenda as a continuing item, and just would like to add that we certainly appreciate all you guys coming out and sharing with you, sharing your thoughts with us. This is certainly an unusual case, given where it's kind of straddling some of our codes, but we, we hope that you guys with Autobarn can, can come to an understanding where maybe we're just, everybody's in agreement when we get here, and we can codify something, or, that's not the right word, but you, you know what I mean. Sir, if you have something, you could certainly say it, but if you could come up, and I could grab you on a mic.
Do you want me to second that motion?
Oh.
Second?
Am I getting ahead of myself?
Just a little.
Yeah.
This is beyond your vote, I think. I, I just wanted to, before we left, find some opportunity that we could get people's contact details so we can arrange a meeting.
Yeah, you, and once we, you guys can certainly handle that outside of our formal hearing process here. So, motion?
Been seconded.
Been seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor for continuation to our meeting on August 20th?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried, and so we will see you all on the 20th. And did we get our applicant for Dempster?
Okay.
Okay. Sir, you've been so patient, so I'm going to give you a moment here, just in case you are not able to make it to our next meeting, and, and the applicant does show up, that we will at least get your, your thoughts on the record.
My name is Peter Kitzoff, or I manage Auto Care, together with my sister, next door.
And if, I'm going to swear you in really quick. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
And I just wanted to attend tonight, because with the previous tenant, LGL Industries, we had no ends of trouble with the parking situation. They had a business where they had lines of 18-wheelers, trucks, trying to park, and they couldn't off Dempster, they parked in our property, they parked across our property line, they, they parked, you know, cut off our access to the, so there was no end of trouble. Now, with a new tenant, obviously, there's going to be no issue, but the parking situation is something that we were concerned with, and we just wanted to put in our two cents worth to make sure that, I don't know what the volume of parents dropping off soccer stars and picking them up later is going to be in the morning, we just don't, we just want to make sure that the parking arrangements will be adequate, so that we don't have people all of a sudden, you know, we're right next door, and we have lots of parking spots that we need for our business, that we don't go, whoop, you know, just sort of dodge in there, pick up the kids, drop them off, and so that there's no confusion. I just wanted to see what their plans were to manage that, and I'm, you know, so I don't know anything yet, it'd probably be all just wonderful, but we didn't want a repeat where our lot becomes a staging area for somebody else's business.
Which side are you on again, sir?
We are on the east side.
You're on the east side?
We're 2015 Dempster. And that was basically, so I haven't met yet with these people, I think one of their representatives approached my sister, the co-manager of the business. I think they're trying to figure out whether there's additional parking, but we haven't had time yet to consider any of that, just so that, as you make your deliberations, that the parking situation, the volume of traffic and the number of cars going, you know, we hope that they'll see we have a wonderful repair business, and that all of these cars may need some services sometimes, so we don't want to be antithetical, we want to work with everybody, but we certainly can have it, that in the morning, particularly in the afternoon, when we take in cars for service or release them in the afternoon, that then, if that coincides with their schedule, that then we have a little bit of parking pandemonium, you know, in the area. So we just wanted to say that and hope for the best.
And I can definitely agree with you that just, at least in terms of looking at the packet information that we receive, you know, certainly, my biggest questions were with respect to traffic, so I expect, you know, assuming that we do get the applicant in here, that, that that will be a fairly important aspect to the discussion. If you aren't available next time, what, what is your kind of, I guess, peak traffic time then? Do you have, or is there such a thing?
We open up at 8 o'clock in the morning, and our peak traffic time would be between 8 and 10, I think, in terms of drop off, people dropping off.
Okay.
It may happen at any time during the day, but the heaviest periods would be in the morning, 8 to 10, and then for pickup, between maybe 3 and 5 o'clock in the afternoon. We are open Saturdays half-day between 8 and 12 o'clock as well. We are not in operation Sundays.
And how many cars do you typically get dropped, get dropped off in a day? Is it three or 20?
Well, I would have the difference there. I would think, think that there are three car days, but it can be 10, it can be 20, though that's, that would be unusual.
20 is an extreme day, so it's.
Let's say 10 if we have the difference.
10 at the most.
On an average day, 10.
On average, it's 10.
To come in the morning, and we have, I think, seven or eight parking spots out there. I mean, we have a long property line there, but we do need it, and, you know, previously, we had some security concerns, not only were 18-wheelers on a, because they weren't being managed by the, by the business that was operating at the time, they were coming into our, you know, just parking an 18-wheeler in front of our property so that nobody could exit or enter, but they were also lined up and parked on Dempster, either a little bit further west or east of the business, some even across our entry to, to our property. And so I don't know whether, if we have 10, 15, 20 people trying to drop off, you know, whether they'll just do a sort of a column then, and then, you know, blinkers and on Dempster, so all of, I don't know that, you know, maybe there's going to be absolutely no issue, but we got a bit skittish with the, with the previous experience, that we wanted to at least say, if there's some consideration in this process, information that you ask from the new tenant, you know, that that be looked at.
Great. Thank you, sir.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, with that, will there be a continuation of this item then?
I don't know, will there? We'll see. In the matter 13ZMJV0061 for 2025 Dempster Street, I move that we continue this until?
August 6th.
August 6th, for our meeting, it'll be here in chambers at 7:30.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and I would just note for the record that we certainly hope to see the applicant at our next meeting, and if the applicant is not at the next meeting, the board does have the right and the ability to dismiss the case based on that, that occurrence. So with that, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried, so this matter will be continued to our next meeting. And with that, if there's nothing else, Melissa, then we will be adjourned for the evening. Thank you.